In accordance with Governor Holcomb's Executive Order 2004 issued March 17, 2020, council members have the option to participate in today's meeting through the use of an electronic device. That means that any member who chooses to participate electronically, but use an electronic device that permits simultaneous dialogue with the other members who are also participating in this meeting. Please vote to hold our meeting electronically until future notice. All rise for the National Anthem of the Tenth Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go, you want to take a roll call to see if everybody's here?
Jenny?
Yes, yes, I'm here, sorry, I was muted, I want quick, I'm moving slow, I'm here.
Okay, looking for a roll call.
Okay, so roll call Nancy Levitt, here. David Winters.
Present.
Tom Pato.
Here.
Greg Van Leer.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Woo-hoo!
Okay, all present in the council room, we have a call. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the executive session held on February 19, 2020. I will take any comments.
February 19th, sir.
February 19, 2020.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I move to accept the minutes of the executive workshop of February 19, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Can you take a roll call, Jenny?
No.
Aye.
Levitt, aye. Harold.
Pardon?
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Van Leer.
Aye.
Well, we have... Is that everybody? I didn't hear.
Yes.
The motion has been passed. On the agenda is approval of the minutes for the work study session held on February... Let's see what we have here. February 19, 2020. I'll take any comments from the council.
I think that's the one we just passed, isn't it?
There's no comments?
That's the one we just did.
You guys did pass that one already?
Yes.
Yeah, we did, but I thought we were going over the whole meeting again.
It's up to you, you're president.
Yeah, 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 we're going through, but we just, we just voted on the one from...
No, I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, there are two sentences from 19.
Oh, okay, okay.
I apologize.
Because it's an executive meeting and a work study on the same day.
Carry on. Sorry.
And a motion and a second?
We do not.
We've not had a motion or a second.
I, I, I motion, I make, I moved that we, uh, pass the second, the executive session from February 19.
Uh, this is for the work study.
For the works. I move that we pass the minutes for the work study from February 19, 2020.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jenny, can you take a vote? Roll call.
Yes, but before I do that, I can't hear who's making motions, so can you please say your name when you make the motion, because everybody sounds the same on my end.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom Pato.
Pato, aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye.
Chris Gerald. Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. Next on the agenda, minutes for the work study held on March 7, 2020. Any comments from the council?
I moved that...
Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
I moved that we, uh, accept the, uh, minutes for the work study from March 7, 2020.
Do I have a second?
David, 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 sorry.
Do I have a second? Please state your name.
Second, Greg Van Leer.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a motion in the second. Jenny, can you take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye. Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion, the motion has been passed. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting held on March 18, 2020. I'll take any comments. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minute?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the town council meeting, March 18, 2020.
Seconded by Greg Van Leer.
David, yep, David was the, uh, move.
Seconded by Greg. Motion by Dave and seconded by Greg. Okay, Jenny, can you take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye.
Chris Gerald. Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. Next on the agenda, minutes for the work study held on March 7, 2020. Any comments from the council?
I moved that...
Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
I moved that we, uh, accept the, uh, minutes for the work study from March 7, 2020.
Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
I moved that we, uh, accept the, uh, minutes for the work study from March 7, 2020.
March 7, yes.
And I'm sorry, who is this talking?
David, 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 sorry.
Do I have a second? Please state your name.
Second, Greg Van Leer.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a motion in the second. Jenny, can you take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye.
Chris Gerald. Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. You're welcome. Next on the item, agenda is approval of the minutes for the special meeting held on March 24, 2020. Any comments? Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
So moved. David Winters.
Please, David Winters. Has the motion...
Second Nancy.
That's the seconded it. Jenny, can you please take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye. Harold.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Van Leer.
Aye.
Okay, the motion, the motion has been passed. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting held on March 18, 2020. I'll take any comments. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minute?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the, uh, town council meeting, March 18, 2020.
Seconded by Greg Van Leer.
David, yep, David was the, uh, move.
Seconded by Greg. Motion by Dave and seconded by Greg. Okay, Jenny, can you take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye.
Chris Gerald. Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion, the motion has been passed. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting held on March 18, 2020. I'll take any comments. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minute?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the, uh, town council meeting, March 18, 2020.
Seconded by Greg Van Leer.
David, yep, David was the, uh, move.
Seconded by Greg. Motion by Dave and seconded by Greg. Okay, Jenny, can you take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye.
Chris Gerald. Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. You're welcome. Next on the item, agenda is approval of the minutes for the special meeting held on March 24, 2020. Any comments? Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
So moved. David Winters.
Please, David Winters. Has the motion...
Second Nancy.
That's the seconded it. Jenny, can you please take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye.
Chris Gerald. Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
The motion has been passed.
You're welcome. Next on the item, agenda is approval of the minutes for the special meeting held on March 24, 2020. Any comments? Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
So moved. David Winters.
Please, David Winters. Has the motion...
Second Nancy.
That's the seconded it. Jenny, can you please take a roll call vote?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye. Harold.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Van Leer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been approved. Next on the agenda is request from the town management to publicize and open the bid process for our farm, our ground. What's about this?
Yes, of course, um, it's, uh, been customary throughout the years that we, uh, rent, uh, our property on, it's on the backside of Broadway, comes off of, uh, Blake, where, uh, Blake, Lincoln, Cartersburg all meet up behind the substation. We own approximately 20 acres, probably 14, 15 of its tillable. Um, again, this has been a, uh, an ongoing rental agreement as long as I can remember since we've owned the property. Um, and the only reason this has become a, a time-sensitive issue is, is that, um, the people who have, uh, farmed it in the past contacted us indicating that, uh, time was getting away from them to, uh, get started planning. So, um, I know I've talked with our, uh, council, I don't know if Jewel's on the phone, but he had some, uh, concerns about, um, our ability to actually do that rental agreement.
The issue that I have with rental agreement is whenever you lease property as a municipality, there are certain procedures that you have to follow. Uh, that, those policies include, and those procedures include getting to appraisals, putting it out for bids, and going through that entire process. And so, uh, when Mark first brought this up, I said, there's a whole process that we've got to go through in order to do that. Um, I had not been involved in the leasing of this property prior to this year, so, um, those are the concerns that I had on the legality for the actual, uh, leasing of farm itself. And so, based upon those discussions, Mark said that, you know, they already had appraisals and had the thought, had anything gotten passed of possibly putting up that property as, uh, excess property, uh, to be put out for the highest bidder.
Right, uh, we received, we received a, um, when we did the appraisals on the other properties that we own, uh, one of the appraisers inadvertently appraised that property. So, in theory, all's we'd have to do is get one more appraisal and we can offer it up for sale with the other properties, uh, and, and again, uh, I, I'd like to work with, um, our legal counsel on this, uh, and find out what would be our most, quite honestly lucrative way to do this. Um, I think however we can make the most money is our best benefit for the town. Uh, not only do we make money off the sale of the property, um, these properties are put back on the tax rolls. And, uh, I think that's the biggest thing, it's the long-term, uh, looking at, uh, of being able to get taxes back on these properties, so, uh, but I leave this up to the council, I, I don't have a preference either way. Um, again, whatever you all want to do. We are still waiting on, uh, one test on Harrison Street to make sure that the, uh, soil is compacted so that, uh, that is actually usable for, uh, building.
All right, thank you, Mark. Uh, any comments from the council?
Do we have people interested in buying the property?
Uh, unofficially, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment. I really do think we should sell the property. Uh, if all things considered, it moves up to that. I'm sorry, Tom, Tom, this is Jewel. Yes?
There's a point of parliamentary order, uh, the person who's running the meeting, you hold the gavel.
I just...
You should not. Yeah, you, you run the meeting and you get to vote, um, but unless you have a gavel.
I understand, I understand it fully. Uh, any comments from the council?
Well, I would just have a comment that, uh, I would be in favor of, uh, selling the, uh, properties that have been appraised. Um, if we wanted to, uh, lease out farm property, I'd be okay with that, too.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item A?
Well, I, I think it would have to be clear as to what you are going to be approving, so whether or not this is moving down the road, uh, putting it out for lease, or to pursue the route of possibly putting it up for sale.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to actually put this land up for sale. Do I have a motion to put this land up for sale?
Are we, are we talking about the farm property up for sale?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we put that farm property up for sale. Greg Van Leer.
Okay, Greg, thank you. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second, David Winters.
Thank you, David. Uh, roll call Jenny first.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye. Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion has been passed.
Well, I, if I understand correctly, you'd like me to get, if I understand correctly, you'd like to give me to get one more appraisal and then work with our legal counsel to put all of these properties up for sale. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next item on the agenda is item B. I request that the clerk treasurer allow her to void checks and receive them back into the orga, uh, originating fund, originating fund, corporate or utility. Jenny, can you, uh, give us a presentation?
Yes, so these are expired checks that have been written out of our corporate fund and our utility fund. A majority of those are deposit refunds for rental properties. For whatever reason, sometimes people will move, or a majority of the time it's for the wedding deposits, and the, they're getting married and they've moved and they don't provide us with a boarding address, and we, we call it, it's a safe for the train station. We try everything to get ahold of people, and I know Will does as well. If we haven't been able to reach them, then we void the checks, and the, after the time limit to cash them is up, and that is what is happening here. And it's a safe for the utility, these are water customer deposit refunds, this happens a lot, where customers bounce around and we can't find them. Or what you're seeing in this report is minimal 25 cents, you know, 17 cents here, and they don't cash them because of the value of the check. So I'm just looking for you guys to approve the expired checks so that we can present them back to the appropriate funds.
Can I just go ahead and make the motion to approve the, the clerk treasurer to void these checks and, and put them back in the, their originating fund?
Who was that speaking?
That was Nancy.
I'll, I'll second that, uh, motion, Greg Van Leer.
Nancy has motioned it and Van Leer has seconded it. Jenny, can you take a roll call?
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt, aye. Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been approved. Are there any comments from the council or staff?
Yes. So, today I participated in an Indiana Bond Bank, um, uh, conference call WebEx after talking with the clerk treasurer about the anticipated, um, possibly lack of cash flow from the county due to delayed tax receipts, uh, from, from the governor and from the, uh, from the county. Um, we may need to look at some alternative funding, uh, to continue to keep, uh, things operational. And one of the things that I learned in this WebEx was, uh, about tax anticipation warrants, and, um, uh, I have some information to, uh, to share with Jenny and Mark on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, for watching, pal.
Yeah, so just, just some information on that, so what Greg is talking about is that, um, they have passed the process for, um, property taxes which are not escrowed, uh, to be due later than the May date, so they'll be, that's due back at the end of June. That's going to push back some of the dispersment for the tax dollars, um, for the town. So normally you get two dispersments, you get one in June, you get one in December. So the majority of your funds come in through those two time periods of those dispersments. This is going to add in another dispersment, but your first dispersment is going to be smaller. We don't know what the impact of that is. Uh, the good news for the town of Danville is you are one of two communities to have a host fund. And so depending upon your cash balances and your other funds, you can borrow against those for cash purposes as long as those are made whole by the end of the year. Um, so you have that opportunity for the tax anticipation warrants, um, that Greg was talking about are essentially short-term loans, it's kind of like bonding against the dispersment for, um, your tax payouts. And so essentially you are collateralizing your dispersment on tax dollars for the cash upfront. Um, and, and the reason why I come to the play is for many communities, they are living from dispersment to dispersment because they're not carrying enough of a cash balance to fund essentially 18 months. That, that's kind of how they want you to try and do it. So, tax anticipation warrants are an option, they, they talk about bans on anticipation notes, um, a bunch of different things. So it, it really is going to be kind of labor-intensive to kind of figure out what your cash balances are moving forward, and then also what funds are available that aren't obligated by other debt, uh, that could be borrowed against internally before you start going out and, uh, getting, I'm cutting off my nose, it's right on my face here, but paying legal fees to get tax anticipation warrants, paying interest on that money, things of that nature. Um, I, I think we need to look internally to see if there's stuff that you guys can utilize first before you go down that road. But it, it may be an option because we don't know what that impact is going to be, and we probably won't know that impact until June when you get that first dispersment of the escrowed property taxes.
Um, this is, this is David.
Okay, thanks, Jewel.
This is David, Jewel, um, Jewel or Jenny, I don't know who can answer this. So I think, with, with the delay of the property taxes, when would we get, when is it, when are they estimating that we would get that full amount, um, of that, that May installment? And then the second question is, is there also an anticipated delay from the November due date of property tax payments?
So right now there's no, I'll take the second part first.
Okay.
Um, there's no delay right now that has been announced for the November payments. I think it'll all be dependent upon where we are with the whole economy and when we can go back to work, then the executive orders are relieved.
Okay.
They don't have an exact date for dispersment for that second part, I, I am imagining that the escrow payments will be dispersed on the regular course, and each county has a different method of doing that. Most counties like to sit on the money as long as possible because they earn interest on that as long as it's sitting there, um, but you will get that part in June, and then that, I would guess that that next dispersment would be delayed about 60 days. Um, the, the problem that you're going to have there is going to be, um, we don't, while we know what you should be receiving, we don't know what the impacts are going to be to the tax base moving forward, and how many people will actually pay that.
Okay.
Um, when you look, when you look at the processes here, if I've got, let's just say I am a resident of Danville, I've got a house, I don't escrow my taxes, I can have a choice because I get laid off or my funds have been reduced, to put food on the table, pay the car so I can get to work to put some food on the table, or pay my property taxes, I'm probably going to put my property taxes out later because I know that it is going to take a long time for the municipalities and the government to go through the process of filing the lien and then coming and kicking me out of my property.
Okay.
And so, we don't know the exact impact of what that's going to be.
Okay, and, and just to make sure I understood, you said we could get, if we get into the host fund, that just has to be paid back by the end of the calendar year?
Correct, so that by the end of the year, when the accounting is done, and a C O A will come in and they will audit the end of the year funds, all those funds have to, the balances have to be proper as to the expenditures out of that fund for the authorized purposes. So as long as you put the money back in before the end of the year, um, you, you should be okay.
Jewel, this is, this is Greg Van Leer, is there, is there a, a guarantee from the county that we will get that money before the end of the year?
Well, yes, so the property tax money, so what, they have to disperse. So, uh, there, I believe that it is June 30th is the last day that they can disperse the spring taxes. Um, that's the way it's normally been, and so towards the end of June, you would receive that. Is, the other one is, I can't remember if it's November 30th or December 15th, but it's by the end of the year, they've got to release the taxes back to the local municipalities, their tax share. So you will receive all of the money that has been paid in by Danville property taxpayers for 2019, pay 2020. In 2020, we just don't know how much that's going to be.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, anybody else with any comment?
I'll just, and Jenny, I know you and I talked, so I, if you were going to say this, I apologize. I think, and there's no, there's no department heads here to hear this, so I don't know if they'll get this information, but I, just in general, I think it's, it's wise that we are watching what we're spending over the next two to three months, um, and if it's, if it's not a necessity, just like everybody else, if it's not a necessity, you know, maybe we need to hold off on a few things, but just, I, I'm sure we're all aware of that already, but I think it's good to say it.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Anybody else?
I'll just add that I sent out an email to the management team saying that, um, my days are running together, I can't remember what day I did that, but I made suggestions, I, I, Mark, Will, Barry, and I met, uh, we brainstormed over just simple things that add up that we could do differently, and big things, and projects that can be put off that don't have to be done right now. So, the management team did meet to see what we could do, and then we passed along suggestions to the department heads and encouraged them to think outside of the box as well. So I just wanted to add that, that we are being proactive, and all of our department heads, I feel, already do an outstanding job, but it's just a good reminder to think like this place is your home, is how I tell them, and that this is your personal checking book.
Thank you very much.
All right, if more comments?
And I'll say, can I just say what they, too, I'm so sorry, I'm getting texts from the public that they can't hear us and they can see Mark and that's it. And his ceiling, so they can see the, Mark's forehead and ceiling, and they can't hear us.
They can't see me, I'm actually in the council room now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I just got two, two texts that they're seeing your office.
Yeah, that, that camera is probably still on.
Yeah.
So that's what's going on live right now.
Yeah, and I have, I've, I've tried to text all of them and tell them that we are no longer live in that video conference.
I, I said that in the video conference, too, that we were leaving.
Okay, perfect.
And I'll, I'll put something on Facebook, too, say, first time, not so good.
And I, and I told, I told Peg at the, I kind of, that I would give her a call when this was done.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? The only thing I have to say is that, um, Will, sometimes during the week when you get this all set up, we should have a practice run with everybody.
I know, that's what I was thinking, but that has to be a public meeting.
It does not?
It doesn't?
No, we're under, Jewel, Craig made mine wrong, but, uh, because we're under emergency order, we can, we can convene a meeting, we can convene a meeting, uh, for this purposes for testing this system.
Yeah, so if it is only for testing the system to make sure that everybody has the ability to properly log on, um, then that, that's fine, we can't talk about anything, we can't, any business, it's just, does everybody have the capability of doing this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, let us know when you get to that point, Will. Okay, and, and Tom, if I could say one more thing, just to put it on the council's radar,
notes, um, a bunch of different things. So it, it really is going to be kind of labor intensive to kind of figure out what your cash balances are moving forward, and then also what funds are available that aren't obligated by other debt, uh, that could be borrowed against internally before you start going out and, uh, getting, I'm cutting off my nose, it's probably my face here, but paying legal fees to get tax anticipation warrants, paying interest on that money, things of that nature. I, I think we need to look internally to see if there's stuff that you guys can utilize first before you go down that road. But it, it may be an option because we don't know what that impact is going to be, and we probably won't know that impact until June when you get that first dispersment of the escrowed property taxes.
Um, this is, this is David.
Okay, thanks, Jewel.
This is David, Jewel, um, Jewel or Jenny, I don't know who can answer this. So I think, with the delay of the property taxes, when would we get, when is it, when are they estimating that we would get that full amount, um, of that, that May installment? And then, the second question is, is there also an anticipated delay from the November due date of property tax payments?
So right now there's no, I'll take the second part first.
Okay.
Um, there's no delay right now that has been announced for the November payments. I think it'll all be dependent upon where we are with the whole economy and when we go back to work, then the executive orders are relieved.
Okay.
They don't have an exact date for dispersment for that second part. I, I am imagining that the escrow payments will be dispersed on a regular course, and each county has a different method of doing that. Most counties like to sit on the money as long as possible because they earn interest on that as long as it's sitting there, um, but you will get that part in June, and then that, I would guess that that next dispersment would be delayed about 60 days. The, the problem that you're going to have there is going to be, um, we don't, while we know what you should be receiving, we don't know what the impacts are going to be to the tax base moving forward and how many people will actually pay that.
Okay.
Um, when you look, when you look at the processes here, if I've got, let's just say I am a resident in Danville, I've got a house, I don't escrow my taxes, I can have a choice because I get laid off or my funds have been reduced, to put food on the table, pay the car so I can get to work to put some food on the table, or pay my property taxes, I'm probably going to put my property taxes out later because I know that it is going to take a long time for the municipalities and the government to go through the process of filing the lien and then coming and kicking me out of my property. And so, we don't know the exact impact of what that's going to be.
Okay, and, and just to make sure I understood, you said we could get, if we get into the host fund, that just has to be paid back by the end of the calendar year?
Correct, so that by the end of the year, when the accounting is done, and if the O A will come in and they will audit the end of the year funds, all those funds have to, the balances have to be proper as to the expenditures out of that fund for the authorized purposes. So as long as you put the money back in before the end of the year, um, you, you should be okay.
Jewel, this is, this is Greg Van Leeuwen, is there, is there a, a guarantee from the county that we will get that money before the end of the year?
It, well, yes, so the property tax money for workers, they have to disperse. So, uh, they're, I believe that it is June 30th is the last day that they can disperse the spring taxes. That's the way it's normally been, and so towards the end of June you would receive that. Is, the other one is, I can't remember, it's November 30th or December 15th, but it's by the end of the year, they've got to release the taxes back to the local municipalities, their tax share. So you will receive all of the money that has been paid in by Danville property taxpayers for 2019, pay 2020. In 2020, we just don't know how much that's going to be.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, anybody else with any comment?
I, I'll just, and Jenny, I know you and I talked, so I, if you were going to say this, I apologize. I think, and there's no, there's no department heads here to hear this, so I don't know if they'll get this information, but I, just in general, I think it's, it's wise that we are watching what we're spending over the next two to three months. And if it's, if it's not a necessity, just like everybody else, if it's not a necessity, you know, maybe we need to hold off on a few things, but just, I, I'm sure we're all aware of that already, but I think it's good to say it.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Anybody else?
I'll just add that I sent out an email to the management team saying that, um, my days are running together, I can't remember what day I did that, but I made suggestions, I, I, Mark, Will, Barry, and I met, uh, we brainstormed over just simple things that add up that we could do differently, and big things, and projects that can be put off that don't have to be done right now. So, the management team did meet to see what we could do, and then we passed along suggestions to the department heads and encouraged them to think outside of the box as well. So, I just wanted to add that, that we are being proactive, and all of our department heads, I feel, already do an outstanding job, but it's just a good reminder to think like, if this place is your home, is how I tell them, and that this is your personal checkbook. Thank you very much.
All right, any more comments?
And I'll say, can I just say what they, too, I'm so sorry, I'm getting texts from the public that they can't hear us and they can see Mark and that's it. And his ceiling, so they can see the, Mark's forehead and ceiling, and they can't hear us.
They can't see me, I'm actually in the council room now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I just got two, two texts that they're seeing your office.
Yeah, that, that camera is probably still on.
Yeah.
So that's what's going on live right now.
Yeah, and I have, I've, I've tried to text all of them and tell them that we are no longer live in that video conference.
I, I said that in the video conference, too, that we were leaving.
Okay, perfect.
And I'll, I'll put something on Facebook, too, say, first time, not so good.
And I, and I told, I told Peg at the, uh, icon that I would give her a call when this was done.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Everything I have to say is that, um, Will, sometimes during the week when you get this all set up, we should have a practice run with everybody.
I know, that's what I was thinking, but that has to be a public meeting.
It does not.
It doesn't?
No, we're under, Jewel, Craig may find wrong, but, uh, because we're under emergency order, we can, we can convene a meeting, we can convene a meeting, uh, for this, purposes for testing this system.
Yeah, so if it is only for testing the system to make sure that everybody has the ability to properly log on, um, then that, that's fine, we can't talk about anything, we can't, any business, it's just, does everybody have the capability of doing this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, let us know when you get to that point, Will. Okay, and, and Tom, if I could say one more thing, just to put it on the council's radar, uh, you know, Jenny's been participating here, but she spent the day at the hospital, um, she sent me her discharge paperwork, so I've got to be careful not to disclose HIPAA related information here, um, but she is going to be, um, quarantined until at least Monday so long as there are no further, uh, symptoms, um, from looking at things. Now if, if, you know, the doctors cannot mandate what the town does, but the doctors are always going to, they're on the side of precaution there, and this doctor's saying, well, we should consider really first cleaning down the town hall and then quarantining certain people who have, may have come in contact just as a precaution. Now, I think that's probably the best, I mean, if you want to be ultimately safe, it's to send everybody home, but we don't have that option really as a town. The town needs to continue to operate. And so, um, I, I would just ask everybody to monitor yourself to make sure that you don't start displaying, um, symptoms, um, and if symptoms are displayed, if the temperature, it's a high temperature, uh, it's a cough, if you get shortness of breath, things of that nature, um, you need to call into your doctor to let them know that the symptoms are up and that there's a, it could be, um, because of the 19 from a possible exposure, but they will then direct you, and if you're in one of that group that is of high risk, or you have some comorbidities or some other, uh, underlying health condition that the doctor has concern over, they will get you to someplace, um, for testing. I think testing in Hendricks County is a little bit limited, um, right now, another one in Danville is limited, and they're trying to keep them for those super, uh, high-risk cases and for healthcare right now. I can tell you that is consistent with what's happened with some of my partners, there, I've got a couple partners who are quarantined into their homes, their children have reported with fever and coughing, and they're not being tested, but they just have to stay for 14 days, so, um, that's just kind of notice for everybody, in case something happens, there's a potential that we have to convene something to, to address, uh, potential additional issues, uh, for the town.
Okay, thanks a lot, Jewel. Jenny, our prayers are with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, oh, wow. So, the next thing is, uh, docket. Have a motion to approve the claim docket, please.
So moved. David Winters.
Second, Greg Van Leeuwen.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Jenny, can you take the roll?
Yes, uh, Tom Pato.
Aye.
But, aye. Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been approved. Uh, there are no other items on tonight's agenda? I will ask you to adjourn.
So moved, David Winters.
Now, motion to adjourn by David? Yep?
Second, Greg Van Leeuwen.
And by Greg. Roll call.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Leavitt, aye. Paul?
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck, Debbie. Please adjourn.
Thank you, I appreciate it.